The pulse of the entertainment industry is strong. That's the word from the movers and shakers as they meet for the annual State of the Entertainment Industry Conference in Hollywood. Among those making it strong, TV executive producer Chuck Lorre, who's receiving the Commitment to California Award. He's behind mega hit TV comedies like Big Bang Theory, Two and a Half Men, and his latest show, The Kaminsky Method.
I just put my 45-year-old daughter in rehab for the eighth time.
Yeah! I don't want to be here!
Just keep going.
Everything I've done has been produced in Los Angeles. I've never worked out of town. The best crews, the best tech people, the deepest pool of talent across the boards here in Los Angeles. Why would you go anywhere else?
It's the kind of talk these people like to hear as Hollywood movie cranes and construction cranes ramp up. And in another piece of good news that helps stop runaway production...
We were able to obtain an extension of the existing California Film Tax Credit Program. Keeps the existing money in place through 2025.
Hollywood is the place where everyone wants to be, especially Netflix. How about Netflix, right? The streaming service will soon have more than 1 million square feet of office space in Hollywood.
TV host and comedian James Corden was hobnobbing with the heavyweights. And a panel of virtual and mixed-reality experts talked about how that technology is changing the industry.
What we're trying to do is bring consumers the ability to watch content on their terms and on their devices.
We're actually involved in spatial entertainment, where you can actually move your physical body and your physical presence around and in that story.
And in keeping with all this new technology, look at this movie-making platform that just came out this year by AR Wall. It actually substitutes the green screen, so you can move around in your virtual or augmented reality without having to replace the green screen later.
One of our goals is really, and this speaks to the spatial entertainment, is for people to literally be able to step inside our stories. And that's part of that spatial idea where you are actually able to be in a world as never before.
Meanwhile, one of the long-term stewards of Hollywood's revitalization is retiring. Laron Gubler from the Hollywood Chamber of Commerce looks back on 26 years.
Back in 1992, Hollywood was a little scruffy. It was a difficult time. A lot of companies were leaving Hollywood. So we worked very hard. We created business improvement districts. We did whatever we could to address the issues of crime and grime and to see what's happening today is just amazing. And it's bringing back the wonderful, rich history of Hollywood.
Among his victories, the Hollywood and Highland Complex, the Dolby Theater, the Academy Awards coming back, and now more TV and movie production than ever. It seems Tinseltown is regaining its place as a star.
Thanks, Anna. That's great news about Netflix expanding locally. Now tell someone at HQ, I'm ready to binge on more episodes of Black Mirror over the holidays. Please and thank you. LA is not just a movie town. We're also seeing an incredible resurgence in the art world. Opening only two years ago, this downtown art gallery is fast becoming a hotspot for international talent. Rashia Goel gives us a tour of Hauser &amp; Wirth.
Hauser &amp; Wirth opened its Los Angeles location in March of 2016 in the heart of the downtown Los Angeles Arts District. The vibrant communal space links art and architecture while bringing together the city's diverse population.
Hauser &amp; Wirth is 25 years old. We started in Zurich in Switzerland. It's a family-run business, and we now have expanded globally and we have nine locations. Well, we've always had a relationship with Los Angeles. We work with some very important artists here. The owners of the gallery, Ivan and Manuela Wirth, would make frequent visits to Los Angeles to meet with these artists, and LA was one of their favorite cities.
The gallery is located at what was once the Globe and Grain Milling Company, a major flour producer. But that, of course, has all changed. This 6,000-square-foot area was actually all once cemented and even covered for more than 60 years. But by opening it up as part of this art gallery, they've added an outdoor terrace, a garden, and even brought in a native Southern California oak tree, which has helped enhance the ambiance.
This building was kind of a derelict building. It was unused, and its history was as a flower mill. But it had all of the elements that we were looking for: the skylights, the open space. We were able to create this interior courtyard that we can show sculpture, and it's an entire city block, so we could utilize the whole space with the restaurant, bookstore, and all of our exhibition spaces.
Some of the featured exhibits include...
We have a beautiful show of Alexander Calder's sculpture called Non-Space, which is on view in our south gallery and in the courtyard. We also are showing the film piece Manifesto, which is a 13-screen film installation. And then in this room, we have Analog by Zoe Leonard, which is one entire work, over 400 photographs that she took over a 10-year period.
Manifesto, making its West Coast premiere, features actress Cate Blanchett in an installation which pays homage to the beauty of artists' manifestos, ultimately questioning the role of the artist in society today. You'll also find Manuela, the onsite restaurant named after Manuela Wirth, one of the owners of the gallery. It offers seasonal, locally sourced produce, an urban garden, a chicken coop, and it's only located at the LA Gallery.
It really showcases her love of food and this kind of farm-to-table philosophy of really fresh, seasonal ingredients that is such a natural part of the California lifestyle, but it's also part of the gallery's ethos.
There's just so much to experience.
We want to create a space that's a destination, so people feel welcome and feel that this is a place they can come and spend time.
So come on down and enjoy some great art, good food, and engage in some creative dialogue. An entrance is free.
Check it out. And in case you missed the headline, admission is free 99. To plan your visit, check them out at hauserwirth.com. Currie Price gives us the 101 on affordable housing. Mayor Garcetti hosts an Inside Mars Landing party, and we give you a taste of holiday cheer in downtown LA. All that in city beat.
Council District 9 recently held a community meeting to discuss the variety of affordable housing projects coming to the area. Councilmember Currie Price noted the importance of neighborhood residents knowing what to expect to take full advantage of the programs.
I'm looking forward to follow-up meetings where we can provide real information to neighbors and friends about how to apply, how to be eligible, and how to get into the affordable housing projects.
The California Science Center opened its doors to the mayor and Los Angeles students wishing to view the recent Mars landing by NASA. For decades, exploration has largely consisted of new Earth or planet surface discoveries. Making students aware of the current Mars mission shows them a whole new world of possibilities, literally.
So it's real people working in teams on ginormous science fair projects to get them excited about these as actual jobs here in Southern California.
Angelenos enjoyed a beautiful annual holiday tradition: the lighting of the Grand Park Tree. Thousands gathered at City Hall to soak in a little holiday spirit, enjoy some holiday brass, and express compassion for those in need.
Our fires have left many people homeless and destroyed many of their possessions that bring them comfort and cheer this time of the year. So while we're happy and cheerful, let us never forget those who needed a little extra cheer this year. And hopefully, all of us can help provide that to somebody.
And go! There you go! All right. The festive season has begun downtown LA.
The LA Zoo is one of our local treasures, and for their fifth year, they're getting dressed up for the holidays with the spectacular LA Zoo Lights. Michael Hernandez got a firsthand look, including a meet-and-greet with four of Santa's reindeer?
Lights, lights, and more lights. It's Zoo Lights at the LA City Zoo, where visitors are treated to quite the show in a very unexpected place.
There is something so magical about the zoo at night. Seven weeks of nights to invite all of Los Angeles: families, children, couples on dates, friend groups, to come explore the zoo. It's adorned with these very creative light displays that are inspired by our animals and nature.
This event started back in 2014, and it's now in its fifth year. Dodger third baseman Justin Turner was one of several grand marshals to officially turn the lights on and invite the public in. The zoo has four of Santa's reindeer available for everyone to see and a reindeer keeper to answer questions about reindeer.
They make a clicking noise. So in the song "Up in the Housetop, Click, Click, Click," it's actually the reindeer making that clicking noise. There is a tendon in their foot that goes back and forth that makes that clicking noise, and they use it for the blizzering storms they cannot see. So they listen out for that noise.
With 14 different light displays and the very popular Twinkle Tunnel, which was extended this year.
The Twinkle Tunnel was amazing, yes. It was so beautiful. We're familiar with the zoo, and so we knew that every year they do Zoo Lights, and this was our first year experiencing it.
LA Zoo Lights runs nightly from 6:00 p.m. until 10:00 p.m., now through January 6th. For LA This Week, I'm Michael Hernandez.
As Michael mentioned, LA Zoo Lights runs through January 6th. Make sure to check it out. More info at lazoolights.org. A local craft fair gets a little renegade. Echo Park celebrates their diversity, and we have details on how you can get involved in the 2019 homeless count. Check out things to do.
The Renegade Craft Fair returns to the State Historic Park in downtown Los Angeles. Join LA's vibrant community of designers, makers, dreamers, and doers as they celebrate 10 years of creating unique and exciting works of art. Explore an array of installments, textile works, and handmade crafts made by local artisans, and all designed to elevate your contemporary craft experience. Artisanal food, great music, and good times await for the entire family to discover. Renegade Craft Fair is happening December 8th and 9th, 11:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., at Los Angeles State Historic Park. Echo Park brings on the fun with its annual community parade. This year's parade theme is celebrating the cultural diversity of Echo Park and is set to happen along Sunset Boulevard between Vinscoley Avenue to Park Avenue. Parade floats and entries will include classic cars, spectacular performances by community groups, and of course, Santa and his elves. The parade promises to continue a decades-long tradition of community spirit and wondrous merriment. The Echo Park Community Parade happens December 8th, 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Check it out online at echo park community parade dot com. The 2019 Homeless Count Volunteer Drive has begun. Each year, the city needs the help of more than 8,000 volunteers to canvass more than 80 cities and 200 communities across LA County. It's a program that helps our officials and communities better understand homelessness in our region and to direct resources where they're needed most. The count is scheduled to take place January 22nd through the 24th of 2019. If you'd like to get involved, register online, theycountwillyou.org. And that's a look at some things to do.
Our beloved Dodgers came this close to a World Series title for the second year in a row. Well, forget about it, because we're celebrating the boys in blue with their third annual pop-up museum. This year honors 100 years of the legendary Jackie Robinson, my man.
This is a very exciting day because we are opening our third annual pop-up museum here at the stadium. It's really fun because it's something that's not here forever. You only have a small amount of time to see it, so when you do come to see it, it's really This year, the museum is celebrating Jackie Robinson and his legacy. You know, it's his 100th birthday next year, January 31st, 2019. So the timing couldn't be better for a Jackie Robinson-themed pop-up museum. We do have some amazing pieces, including a Jackie Robinson jersey, a Jackie Robinson hat, and his bat.
I think it's really cool. Obviously, I've heard a lot throughout history of Jackie Robinson, color barrier. I've heard a lot from him about Fernando Valenzuela, Kirk Gibson's homerun, Sandy Koufax even. So I think being able to see a bunch of the players in the different exhibits and a bunch of the artifacts from that is really cool.
Back in the day, my daddy used to drop me off at Dodger Stadium when I was 16, and I used to walk from Dodger Stadium all the way to Boyle Heights where I lived. If you're a diehard Dodger fan like I am and my son, take this tour.
Anytime that I get to spend with both him and top it off with our favorite team, makes it all the better.
We have our first class of Dodger legends, and that would be Steve Garvey, Don Newcombe, and Fernando Valenzuela. And it's really interesting because Newcombe has that connection to Jackie Robinson being signed by the Dodgers shortly after Jackie was. And then we have Garvey. Garvey was Jackie's bat boy when he was like seven or eight, when he was a little boy, which is really great. And then Fernando Valenzuela, who made a huge impact, similar to what Jackie did, but for the Hispanic community.
I believe Dodger blue. Like Tom LaSalle said.
We're very proud to be the organization that helped break the color barrier in baseball and ultimately helped change the world as we know it.
That's going to do it for this edition. I'm Umayman Rashid. From all of us here at LA This Week, thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org and check out our newest social media videos, LA This Minute.
Good morning, good morning, good morning. Today is Friday, December 7th. Welcome to the Valley. Madam Clerk, we do have a quorum. Would you please call the roll?
Bloomingfield, Bonin, Buscagino, Sadio, Englander, Harris-Dawson, Weiser, Corretts, Krikorian, Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Rodriguez, Rue, Wesson, 10 members present and a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you. First order of business.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Krikorian moves. Martinez seconds, next.
Approval of the minutes.
Englander moves, and Bonin seconds, next.
Mr. President, items 1 through 9 are items for which public hearings have been held. The committed report for item 9 has been submitted, posted, and circulated for council's consideration.
Okay. Why don't we prepare to vote on those items? If you would please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
All right. Move forward, please.
Item 10 is an item for which a public hearing has not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
So without objection, that item is now before this body. Do you have cards on these items?
Yes, there are cards. On this item? Yes, on item 10.
Okay, let's hold that, and that brings us where?
Mr. President, it takes council back to presentations or items called special.
Okay, I want to recognize Ms. Martinez. Are you prepared? Okay, then the floor is yours.
Good morning. Good morning, Mr. President. Good morning, colleagues.
Come on, come on, come on. Don't be shy. Don't be shy.
I'm excited to present to council someone who is very special and someone who has made a significant difference here in the northeast San Fernando Valley community. So can you please help me welcome my friend, Yvette Pineda? Yvette was born in El Salvador and immigrated to the United States at the age of two with her parents, and neither of which spoke English. She graduated from our local schools and graduated from CSUN with a BA in sociology and later graduated with a master's degree in public administration. Yvette is a proud product of this community, someone who's always willing to roll up her sleeves and get things done. But I'm really sad to say that after 13 years of service, Yvette is leaving the North Valley Carrying Services. The North Valley... The North Valley Caring Services has really humble beginnings as a soup kitchen in the 1970s, providing food, aid, services to thousands of families and homeless individuals in the San Fernando Valley. Yvette began her work at North Valley Caring Services back in 2006 as an outreach worker, I'm sorry, as an outreach coordinator, and she later moved up, moved up, and eventually became the associate director, and then in 2009, she became the executive director of the organization. Yvette has well-served and embodied everything that North Caring Services' mission is. She has continued to adapt their services and the different challenges to our community every single day. The North Valley Caring Services is a model center for community empowerment, offering a wide array of programs enabling residents and families to fight their way out of poverty while encouraging them to build a vision for their own community's future. Never forgetting the community, she came from, Yvette understands the struggles and hardships that our families experience every single day, and more importantly, she actually values a really good education in making sure our kids have access to good schools. Promoting early education has been a passion of hers. That's how, in fact, we got to know each other when I was on the school board. She just wanted to make sure, just like we grew up, not necessarily being English, proud English learners, as young children, we always valued and had that in common, that it was so important for our kids to have access to good schools, to good teachers, to good literacy programs, to ensure that our kids were able to speak English and integrate into the community. She served not only the North Valley Caring Services extremely well, but she actually made sure that the thousands of families and students that were going through the organization had access to ESL classes and early literacy program, which is one of the things that I love her for so much. She really cared about our kids. And she's always made sure that she was educating herself and coming up with forward-thinking, cutting-edge programs for the community. Back in 2015, she helped start the Welcome Center at the North Valley Caring Services, which helps immigrant families understand the policies and procedures of becoming residents and creating a safe space for them to actually be able to get immigration services at a safe location. Yvette has also shown great, an amazing faith and advocate. She's been an amazing advocate for our families to ensure that these resources are available to them. We've partnered in a number of different types of events in my district, from community cleanups to Thanksgiving dinners that are held at her organization every single Thanksgiving every year for the last two or three years. We've had Thanksgiving dinner at her, at North Valley Caring Services for thousands of families who find themselves on the streets. We've actually had homeless connect days at her agency, county's neighborhood council meetings, and this year, I'm really proud that tomorrow, we're going to have Santa right outside of the Van Nuys City Hall, and we're partnering up on my gift of reading a literacy celebration that we have every single year. I'm not into giving out toys or any of that. I'm a grinch, sorry. I think kids during the three-week break that they have of LUSD, they need to ensure that they're reading. And so Yvette is one of my conspirators, and she says, "That's a great idea. Why don't we pass out books and backpacks and ensure that our kids are utilizing their three days off of school for something good, right? Make sure that they keep those little minds working." So tomorrow, we will be serving together over 500 kids who are going to gather here at our Van Nuys Civic Center to pass out books and encourage our kids to read. So with no further ado, I want to congratulate and just let Yvette know how immensely proud I am of you, of being an amazing leader in our community, a woman of her word, a woman of integrity, and a woman who really cares about the future of our families and our kids. So I want to introduce her to the council. I want all of us to give her a big round of applause. She's going to be moving on, but I want to wish her well and just give her a round of applause.
Give her a round of applause. Thank you for your service.
I just want to say thank you, Councilman Nury, for always being there. I'm never going to forget that when we didn't have a representative in our district, you were always there for us and your staff. It's been an amazing pleasure to work with you. I share this honor with the people that are standing right here with me. It's a team effort. I couldn't have done it without them. They've come along this journey with me, to mentor me, to encourage me, to give me words of advice, and really, it's a team effort. And I'm grateful for where I leave things. I feel like change is good for the soul, and I have seen a leader emerge from within us, and he's amazing, and he's standing right here, and he has great vision and passion, and I'm passing on this charge to him, and I know it's going to be, the work is going to continue. We're going to continue to make a difference and lives of the people there. Throughout my years there, I have seen amazing things. I've seen kids grow from preschool to go to college. I've seen moms that are struggling learn English and find jobs and better help their children in school, and I've seen people that are homeless find hope there because of a meal or because of a shower. So I am grateful for everything that I've been through there and the journey, and it's been a great blessing for me, and I'm grateful for all you that are here that are part of that, and I know that it's going to continue on. So thank you.
So, Yvette, so on behalf of the city of Los Angeles, I'd like to recognize my friend, Yvette Pineda, for her 13 years of service with the North Valley Caring Services. Let's give her another big round of applause.
Yeah.
Do you want to do this side or this? Is this a better angle?
Yeah, let's get it so we can see.
There we go. I'm in there. I'm hard to miss. I'm right here. They can see me quite fine.
Again, congratulations, and thank you very much. Thank you. Okay, members, what we're going to do now, we'll go into general public comment. I want to start off with Ann Flanders, Dr. Laws, Stephen Nasinski, and Alex Nasinski come forward to the center aisle. Yes, come on up. Welcome.
Thank you. Good morning, Councilman. My name is Ann Flanders. My husband, John, and I have been Airbnb hosts for the last year in our primary residence in Woodland Hills, two bedrooms. The reason why I'm coming here for today is to tell you the good side of Airbnb. A couple of months ago, we signed up for the free host emergency on the Airbnb site, having no idea that the Wusli fire were going to occur. When they did, we got several, you know, requests and more than we could handle. We even at one point gave our bedroom to a family of Topanga Canyon. We hosted people from Calabasas. We slept in the studio of my husband, and we, I, what I want to tell you is that it was an amazing experience, you know, for the people to just suddenly, in a heartbeat, have that. I don't think the hotels in Woodland Hills did it for free.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you so much. Yes?
Good morning, council members. I know a few of you, because I was a city commissioner several years back. I'm here in support of Airbnb. It helps my family with bills, as is the case for many people I know. I want to address the high fee that you are thinking of imposing on those who host over 120 nights. A high fee benefits the wealthy and hurts the poor and moderate-income people of Los Angeles. For example, some hosts rent out a room for under $20 a night. An $800 fee is a disaster for them. Other hosts rent out a room for $800 a night. Obviously, a high fee would not affect them. You are a council who has always cared about the poor and moderate-income people of this city. You should not be setting a policy that devastates them while benefiting the rich. You should either, one, keep the amount reasonable at, say, $50 for a year, or, two, exempt low-income hosts from any fee whatsoever, while for others, make the fee reasonable at, say, 1% of the nightly amount for each and every night.
Thank you.
A fee that is proportional is fair.
Thank you. And you are Dr. Laws, right?
Yes, I'm Dr. Laws.
Okay, thank you. Next speaker, please identify yourself, and I'll be looking for Joanne Kimes, Anna Camacho. Yes?
I'm Stephen Naschinsky. I'm here to talk about home sharing. I'm a homeowner of 25 years in CD3. Primary residence home-sharing hosts have a reputation for being responsible, good neighbors. Many have proven their ability to successfully book multiple listings in their home without bothering their neighbors. Don't limit these responsible hosts to one booking per residence. And please, allow only serious nuisance or uncorrected citations for reason for considering suspension or revocation of home-sharing privileges. And finally, please don't allow cranky neighbors with questionable complaints or, worse yet, hidden prejudices like racism, sexism, or religion result in hosting's losing their life-saving home-sharing income. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Alex Naschinsky. I'm a 22-year-old, and I'm attending Pierce College, Community College, right now, and I've lived in Woodland Hills my whole life. I am the main person who cleans and manages our two Airbnb rooms in our home. The income I get from these two rooms is a critical part of what allows me to attend Pierce College and eventually go on to a four-year university. We've booked two rooms at the same time for over two years with no problems for us or our neighbors. Please do not limit the number of bookings in our home, our primary residence. If you do, this will cut our home-sharing income in half. Imagine how a cut of 50% in your income would impact your life. Thank you.
Thank you. So next?
Hi, my name is Joanne, and I have a small house in Studio City with a guest house in the back that, for the last four years, I've been renting out since I got divorced to be able to remain in the neighborhood. I've lived for 30 years. The additional income has been crucial to put my daughter in college, pay for her medical bills, and if primary residents are not allowed to rent out their houses for, throughout the year, I will be forced to move. So I encourage you to please keep that unlimited amount going, and also, when it comes to the fees, keep in mind that I always push mom-and-pop shops in my neighborhood, which I know my, the businesses absolutely are grateful for. And it's true, the noise complaints, you know, I've never had a complaint. My neighbors love that I have this because they invite family, you know, for vacations, but they might not want to live with their family in the same house for a few days, so I always offer them to stay in my place. I've never had a noise complaint, and thank you so much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good morning. My name is Anna Maria Camacho, and I'm also a favorite of Airbnb. I've been hosting for over two years. I'm 63. My husband is 68-years-old. We also ask for, not limited for one booking only, because besides, we kids are already gone. That's the way we pay the house. If we limit it and we have outrageous fees, we're going to be on the streets. So we are baby boomers. We have worked hard. Most of the people who is an Airbnb, they've done it because it's older people or single moms, and just do the fair thing. I know you guys probably have your own space fine, but for us, the lower income, we need this income for us to stay safe. I just, please, ask you for that, and thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now, if I could get Mr. Gus, you have items 10 and general public comment, so if we could give him two minutes. After him, Mr. Murphy. Yes, sir?
Thank you. Council members, I object to Mr. Wesson voting on item number 10. As I have pointed out in my column on City Watch, his residence has been misused for voter fraud by not only a family member but an employee who is your floor director. Mr. Wesson can't vote on something when he has been part and parcel of an election. His property has been misused by his son, where he has claimed residency there, even though he lives in, not only, not at that address, Mr. Wesson's son lives in South Pasadena. Mr. Wesson cannot vote on item number 10 because not only am I writing further about the voter fraud of Justin Wesson, I am reporting it to the Secretary of State, and then we're going to compare every election he's voted in as compared to Mr. Wesson's address.
Now, your general public comment?
General public comment. I have a column today about Mr. Wesson's really poor listening comprehension and Mr. Krikorian's poor reading comprehension about that moronic straw ban you voted in the other day. Check it out, because you guys really don't listen. But today on City Watch, Jack Humphreyville has a fantastic column called "Herb Wesson Has His Eye on a County Supervisor Seat, But His Spotty Record at City Council May Be His Undoing." Very interesting, when you only get 60 seconds to speak on an item at city council, and then he wants to have control over 2 million people. And by the way, I agree with Mr. Humphreyville's prior column that Jose Weezer is going to flip. He had better talk about Mr. Wesson's underreported and unreported income, because if he doesn't flip and tell the story, I'm going to report the story of Mr. Wesson's underreported income and underreported income.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Murphy? Item 10 and your general public comment.
Yeah, item 10, I'm against. General public comment. That officer that I was sitting in the front desk out downstairs, he was very rude. He should be talked to. Otherwise, I'm not, otherwise, he should be F.R.I.D., fired immediately.
Thank you. If I could get Mr. Previn, item 10, and your general public comment. Mr. Herman, item 10 and your general public comment.
Thank you, sir. It's Eric Previn from Studio City, speaking a little bit on behalf of myself, but I want to just thank you for certifying this election. This was the big one in November, and obviously, we had several open forums in our community. We had candidates come out and discuss the various issues. It was very exciting, and of course, the outcome is what the outcome was. I think we all know. We're going to certify it later. I just wanted to extend again, because the feeling about elections is participatory, and we're all trying to struggle to get to know what's going on. We got a longer ballot than ever, and we're also adjusting the campaign finance ordinances. And I know we've got a couple of leaders in the House, sir. We have, we have Mike Bonin, who is the Clean Money Man himself, and we have David Rue, who is certainly the Reform King, and the two of them together are ready and prime because they've been making motions over the last couple of years to help. And I, you know, I know we all talked about it in this room last month, and, you know, we were considering the various ways, levers, and, but they, so far, we're trying to get a little availability check. We're doing a triple check. We're doing a triple check on that. Now, others are welcome, is the good news. That's what we've decided. We decided there's no point in focusing on David Rue and Mike Bonin exclusively.
Now, your general.
Because we have you, sir, as well, the council president, who is no stranger to the way it works. And what we want to do is inform people just exactly how it works, so that they can understand. For example, if you want to contribute to an individual, you want to add value to your vote or your contribution, you can give $115. You put it into the public matching machine, and it pops out as 800. So this is a great opportunity to not triple down, but sextuple down on your investment. So that's cool, but we've got some other little rules in and around that we want to just kind of get a clarification on. So that's why, what's going to extend, and you're the leader, sir, because I think people are waiting for your leadership. So if you'd like to come with the motorcade, we'd be happy to have you. We're a very friendly little town. Or if you'd like to deploy the guys who you seem to think are good on that subject, along with Carretts, obviously, who's not here today wisely, they could come. But anybody is welcome, including Bloomingfield and certainly Nury Martinez, because we've reached out to people who are kind of surrounding CD2. So, sir, with that, let me just simply say, have a nice early part of December.
Thank you, Mr. Previn. Okay, Mr. Herman, you got one minute on 10, and then another minute, general public comment.
So in question is why is Justin Wesson at 1956 Virginia Road committing voter fraud? Why? Don't we have enough liars in this city to commit fraud on the request?
So is this your general public comment, Mr. Herman? Because it's unrelated to item 10.
Yeah, it's related to item 10. It's dealing with the Los Angeles special election, and the jackass son of Herman, Jason Wesson, has continued to commit voter fraud, claiming to live at 1656 Virginia Road.
Okay, this really isn't related to item 10.
Just let him go. Just let him go.
Why do we have to have this confrontation every time, Mr. Attorney? It's not my fault, Mr. Wobble.
Just go on, Mr. Herman.
But you're not circumcised. So you see?
Okay, now, give him his one minute. Mr. Herman, come on.
I know for a fact that Mr. Fable, Straffan, is not circumcised. Shut up.
That has nothing to do with the city's, with the city's responsibility, so just stay on something the city deals with.
The city of Los Angeles has committed crime after crime, beginning with Jose Weezer, who's sitting in that little box over there hiding from criticism. If the bitch don't want to sit in his seat and take criticism, stay home with your fat wife, Miss Rios Weezer. stay home with your fat wife, Miss Rios Wezar. And again, when you want to lie with Mr. Shiska, Englander's wife, let's ask her the question.
Let's just stay on the.
Why can't you iron his fucking shirt and give him a pair of good shoes?
No, stay on the subject, Mr. Herman.
I'm on subject.
No, you got.
You got the shishka bob.
No, this is not within the subject matter.
Thank you, Mr. Herman. Your time's expired. Okay, if I could now get, is there Mr. Walker, or Brenda Bichel, or Bushnell, Donna Pierman? Come forward. Candido? Well, you can only speak on two, so we'll give you your one minute for the Item 10 and then your one minute for general public comment.
I'll take that.
Ms. Pierman, you're next. Yes.
Don't start me. Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, I want to wish you all Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Goydantof. And I apologize for the hatred that is being spewed here. I do want to say that I've been fortunate to live in the 12th District, where I was honored to have Mr. Hal Burnson, who served for over 30 years, Mr. Greg Smith for eight years, and gave a commitment that he wouldn't serve more than eight years. But you're bringing him back, Mr. Wesson, and that's a great honor to the 12th District. But here we have Mr. Englander. I want to thank you, Mitch. I want to thank you because you take care of the simplest things. Every time we walk out of our doors, the streets are clean, the trash is picked up. Whatever it is, you've always taken care of it. You know, everybody's looking for the limelight.
Candido, you gotta get on the subject now.
This is public comment. I thought it was.
Oh, you're just general. Go ahead.
Yes, can I, I need 10 minutes, seconds back. I just, sir, you can't cut me off when I'm talking about my, all right? Yeah, please. So, so everybody knows here that I'm not a kiss ass, and I'm not kissing his ass or anybody else. But this gentleman has proven himself a true gentleman.
Let's give him his minute. This is on Item 10.
No, this was public comment, sir.
No, you got another minute on Item 10.
All right, now we go with public comment. This, no, it was on Item 6 and 7, the gang.
No, 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 the items that you could speak on today was Item 10.
If you hold my.
So that's regarding the certification of the election. So you've got a minute on that if you'd like.
All right, I'll try to fill in there. You know, I'm glad that all took place, but, you know, in our communities, we have what are called gangs. Sometimes they're gangs with youth. Sometimes they're gangs that have been formed in neighborhood councils. Councils, especially like here in Van Nuys, when you have a bunch of thugs, like the ones who are controlling Van Nuys, and they take away the First Amendment rights for individuals who have lived in the Van Nuys area for 30, 40, 50 years. And these people are outsiders trying to take away the vote.
We're off of the subject of elections.
Okay, Mr. Candido, thank you, my brother. Let's call up, where's Ms. Pierman? Donna? Donna, you have Item 10 and general public comment. Do we have Brenda? Brenda and Mr. Walker? Go ahead.
Okay, as far as I'm concerned, I don't want any confirmation on the special election because the number B and number E and number EE was a big loser ID in the first place. Never should have been on the election place in the first place. So as far as I'm concerned, you can wait forever for having those items. I don't, as I said, I don't even think they should have been on there, and I probably got voted for voter fraud, just like Wezar has a son, it's voter fraud. So, so we should not have this item. So many things, I think the whole election was a voter fraud, and that's why, that's why they didn't repeal the gas tax, because a whole lot of people doing voter fraud through this whole thing, and I bet number B and I bet number E and I bet number EE probably also had voter fraud. So we need to stop shutting people up around here and listen to what people are saying, even if you don't like the way they're saying it. And now, I'm gonna go on.
Let's get her general one minute.
Okay, Happy Hanukkah to everybody, by the way. This is my friend, the elephant. Hello! So anyway, what I want to do is top, first of all, bring back Van Nuys video conferencing. Those people can talk on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays. So if they get tired and they can't come that day, they still, they don't have to wait two months. So that's totally wrong for you to do that. You need to open Van Nuys video conference. You need to stop shutting down conservative voices everywhere. Conservative voices are not being heard. There are always, conservative voices are being put down. They're being called names. They're saying they're sexist, they're racist, they're missing up. They're all these different names that no one's ever heard of before. And I don't like it very much. I think with conservative voices, Republican voices need to be heard. That we need to stop having the caravans coming over here because they're ruining the country. And they're not helping them any. That's right!
Thank you.
They're conservative voices!
Thank you, Ms. Pierman. Okay, Mr. Spindler, you came in late. We were already going, but I'm gonna bring you up. You have Item 10 and you have your general public comment. So give him a minute for Item 10, and then his general public comment.
Well, how nice. So that's it. Remember to go to Walmart and buy this cute little toy, just like all of you in this agenda.
Okay, sorry. Item 10?
Got that fat Keebler telling me I'm not on topic. I am. There are only one item. One item for a black man to speak in Van Nuys about.
Okay, so we should get on the agenda item, or?
That a black man like me is.
No, no, you're not on topic. Now, give him his, give him the one minute. Give him one minute for his general public comment.
All those black folks are just treated like shit over here in Van Nuys. And I'm tired of taking the public transportation and being called by Mike Bonin a transportation nigger. Every time Mike Bonin calling me nigger. Now he go, and he stole the black baby. And he call that black baby a daughter. That motherfucker got nowhere.
That has nothing to do with, this city has nothing to do, Mr. Spindler. You're gonna speak on city business or not?
It's city business. That motherfucking white faggot got himself a watch there.
Sergeant, his time's expired. Thank you. Mr. Spindler, now you're disrupting, so you gotta cut it out. You gotta cut it out. Please take a seat. Please take a seat. Please take a seat. Take a seat, Mr. Spindler. And he's still disrupting the meeting. Again, Mr. Spindler, your time is expired. Okay, last call for Mr. Walker and Brenda, and I guess that's it. So that concludes general public comment. Madam Clerk, that brings us where?
Item 10.
Okay, let's prepare to vote on Item 10. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Okay.
And, Mr. President, there is a request to send that item forthwith.
So ordered. What's before this body?
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Okay, Mr. Spindler, let's please keep it down. Okay, we are where, Madam Clerk?
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Okay, they are posted. They are referred. All right, any announcements, members? Announcements? Any, Mr. Krikorian?
Very much, Mr. President. I don't know if this is an announcement or an adjournment, but we'll do it as an announcement. First, I think it's important that the council note that today, 77 years ago, was the attack on Pearl Harbor that brought the United States into World War II. So I think it's important every year that we mark this day and remember the over 2,000 people who were killed in that attack, and of course, all those who served in the war that would immediately follow in response to it. I also want to note that this is the 30th anniversary of the earthquake that devastated Armenia in 1988, the Spitak earthquake, which killed 25,000 to 50,000 people and left over 100,000 people injured, and solicited an enormous humanitarian response from the United States and countries throughout the world, including many here in Los Angeles, who contributed generously to ensure that the people who were victims of that earthquake could get back on their feet and that, back in homes, and have a rebuilding effort that allowed people to continue to live there. And of course, it also prompted a significant immigration to the United States as well by people who were victimized there and then found their homes here in Los Angeles in response, in the aftermath of that earthquake. So I think it's important that we note those who were killed and also those here in Los Angeles who responded so generously to that effort.
Well said, Mr. Krikorian. Any other announcements, members? Then if we could all rise for adjourning motions? I'm looking to my right side, Mr. Ruh's side. I don't see any adjourning motions to my right. I'm looking to my left side. I don't see any adjourning motions to my left. Members, this meeting's adjourned.
What I enjoy most is being able to fabricate and create and produce items literally from just a concept or an idea that's placed on a piece of paper or even an image that you see on a screen. American Furniture Manufacturer supplies furniture for a lot of big-name hotels in the Los Angeles market and all throughout California. We focus mainly on commercial clients, and to make it commercial, it needs to be very, very durable, very high-quality. My father, Harry, started this company in 2004. I personally joined the company in 2008. As vice president, my day-to-day tasks include everything that you need to do to run a business, reviewing design, scheduling, and coordinating logistics, as well as accounting and anything else you can think of. Most of the things that I learned and our success now has been through experience and on-the-job experience. I would say what makes AFM Contract unique is the fact that we're very punctual, very transparent, and cause conscientious to the client. American Furniture Manufacturer would have 65 employees in California altogether. Internationally, Indonesia and China, where we also have factories, goals combined can range up to the thousands. We mainly ship through the port of LA. Per month, approximately, we import about 30 to 40 containers. We were drawn to Pomona, California, because the property in this area was quite large and financially obtainable. My wife and I enjoy cooking in our spare time. When you're cooking, you can only focus on cooking. You get some sort of like meditation or peace through that. I would say there's nothing I dislike about my job. As challenging or as tough as the day would get, whenever you go through these challenges, you can only grow and learn from it. I find great gratification in working for a family business. At the end of the day, any success or any growth that you have is towards the growth and success for your family, which is also in turn helping out the community and creating job opportunities for new employees. That's where I get gratification.
San Bernardino and San Diego reporting a combined loss of 44% of cropland acres removed from protection. And it is this fringe farmland that perhaps is the most important because it provides the local population with its local access to fresh foods. Throughout the Southland, the conversion of farmland to housing and industry is happening right before us on our daily commute. Over 45,000 acres within the last decade. And statewide, the University of California reported in 2001 that from 1988 through 1998, almost half a million acres of fringe farmland was lost.
It's difficult to find public support all the way around for agricultural preservation, and that's for a number of reasons. The development community is very interested in purchasing agricultural land because it's usually a little less expensive. Another issue is the residents in adjacent urban areas are often complacent to agricultural conversion. And what we're finding is a lot of the farming members are very interested in the opportunity to sell their land to a developer at the time when they're planning on retiring.
Despite the expansive urbanization, the eight counties of Southern California in 2002 generated $6 billion in agricultural production and seven out of the eight rank in the state's top 20 agricultural counties. Can the region afford to lose such a vital industry?